I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 10th, 2023 to order. Quick note, we will be going into executive session and we will return to open session no later than 6:00 PM. Don?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to enter executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the fire chief, finance director, town accountant, and town administrator. Also be pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions and that there is determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, the Harwich Police Patrol.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into executive session as read. Roll call, vote. Larry?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Four to zero. It is a vote, and I so declare it. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 10th, 2023 back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we discussed collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel, the Harwich Police Patrol Union, and we are pleased to say that we did vote to ratify that contract. So all eight of our unions have contracts, long-term contracts. We also discussed the finance director and the fire chief and the town administrator. No decisions were made. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Public comment and announcement?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I will not be here next week due to the holiday, and we have a business after hours the same night as you'll be meeting, so wanted to bring both of these to everyone's attention. Once again, we're doing the annual dinner at 400 East to review the town warrant articles. It is Tuesday, April 25th at 5:30. You can register with me at the Chamber on our website or by calling 508-430-1165. That is my office. And then also that week is Thursday, April 27th, we are doing the Meet the New Owner and Chef at Red River Barbecue, and that is also an RSVP, and that will be 5 to 7. Jeremiah, the new owner, will be providing past samplings, and there'll be a cash bar. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening. Cara Maweni, Director of Cultural Affairs. I'm here to tell you all about Art Week. So we've been working very hard to put together our events, and we're going to be kicking it off with our prelude on April 29th, which I'm sure you've heard me say a million times. We have a community art show, and we have probably 75 pieces collected from the community, and some of them are high school students as well. So I'm really excited to say that we were able to get a broad range of ages for that. Opening reception will be on April 29th from 3:00 PM to 6:00, so we encourage everyone to come for that. Then we'll be kicking off officially Art Week with our first-ever community paint-along. It'll be from 1 to 3, hosted by Bernadette Wastack, and it's a pay what you can. We're not really requiring much of anything. Proceeds will be benefiting Duffy Health Center for homelessness. Then throughout the week, we have self-guided activities ranging from Tag Your Locker at the 204, which I heard is going to be pretty popular. So if you can remember your locker number from either high school or middle school, you can come in, put a post-it on it, and we're going to take a record of that locker location, and we're going to incorporate it into the mural projects that we'll be doing with the lockers, with the students for future art collaboration. And we also will have getting people out on the trails. We'll be encouraging people to go to Island Pond Cemetery to get to know the famous poets, writers, and artists that are actually buried there. We will be encouraging people to do a scavenger hunt throughout the town to get to know the seven villages, a gallery hunt, and various other activities, all of which you can just find out either online for our brand-new website for the cultural districts, which is harwichculturaldistricts.org, officially launches tomorrow on Tuesday. And then they can come into my office and pick up brochures and other handouts as well if they prefer the paper method. And then our signature events are Friday, May 5th, which we have our ribbon cutting for the cultural districts. We'll have a creative swap, first time ever. We have Jenny McDonald and Mike Lamo from Full Circle Homes and HDTV's Houses with History coming in to do a Homes with History project. We'll be rounding out the evening with a concert by Monica Rizzo and Celia Woodsmith. Saturday, May 6th, our Spring Market and Open House. We'll have open studios where a variety of our artists are doing white-line woodblock bookbinding. We're going to have quilling, pan pastels, and other demonstrations in most of our studios taking place. We will also have a performance done by Mad Science, and they're going to be doing a Fire and Ice show outside. Then on Sunday, May 7th, we're going to be closing Art Week with our Family Fun Day. We'll have a vendor showcase from 10 to 4, and then all the family fun will be from 12 to 4. We'll have the amazing gaming truck of Cape Cod, who will be hosting the truck for four hours, as well as laser tag. We'll have another Mad Science show, Marvelous of Motion. We'll have Stevie Kitting, the Ridiculous Magician, grab-and-go art kits. We'll have a bubble station, so you can actually make a bubble the size of a kid. We're going to have face painting provided by Jennifer Stratton and much more. All of these activities are free that we're going to be sponsoring, and they're all made possible by the Massachusetts Cultural Council Cultural Districts Improvement Grant, as well as a generous sponsorship by Cape Cod Five Community Engagement Fund. So in order to get all the real details, they can visit our website, come see me in person, or follow us on social media. We're going to be embedding it all into community calendars. And one fun thing that we are doing is we're going to be decorating the trees at the 204 with yarns. We're doing our first-ever yarn pop, so we've been encouraging people to come in, grab some yarn, because we have a little donation of yarn, and they can either make pom-poms if they're an avid knitter. They can definitely make a little piece. We're asking for 12-inch by 24-inch sections that we can kind of fuse together and wrap the trees at 204 system width. So we're going to have Art Week be color of a splash, and we're going to have a lot of exciting times. So thank you for that, and I hope the community comes out for it.
Thank you. And what is the website? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Sowinski, Conservation Administrator. I'm here to talk to you about another great event, also on April 29th. So before you go to the art show, you can help clean up the town of Harwich for in the morning-
Tour de Trash.
-for our annual tour de trash. I believe, don't quote me, I think it's the eighth annual community cleanup. So it is a collaboration between the Harwich Conservation Trust, the town of Harwich, and with assistance from AmeriCorps Cape Cod, and it's an event where we basically clean up the town every spring, and it's Earth Week. It's the end of Earth Week. So if you are interested in picking a route, we are doing road sides. If you're interested in doing a route, you can go to the Town Harwich website and go to the Community Events page. On April 29th, if you click on that date, there's a link to the sign-up there, and you can pick which road you want to do. It starts by all of everybody coming to the Harwich Community Center to pick up bags and pickers, things like that, to make safety vests so that you're safe along the roads. And then you go out on your route. When you come back with your trash and your recycling, you will be entered into one of many gift card raffles that have been donated for this event, as well as everybody will leave with at least a seedling or a batch of seeds for your house for Earth Week. So 10 to noonish on Saturday, April 29th. Go to the Harwich Conservation Trust website, the Town of Harwich page under Events. You can find it on social media. It's on the Town of Harwich social media pages.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick announcements. First is a reminder that the Legal Women Voters of the Cape Cod area is sponsoring a Candidates Forum. This will be on Thursday, April 20th at 6:00 PM here in the Griffin Room. Again, this is the Candidates for Harwich Board of Selectmen, Thursday, April 20th, 6:00 PM here in the Griffin Room at Town Hall. They ask you to bring your questions and join them. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a reminder from our treasurer-collector that the fourth-quarter real estate and personal property bills are due no later than Monday, May 1st, 2023. So again, the fourth-quarter real estate and personal property due no later than Monday, May 1st. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mary?
I've been reading the committee vacancies for the last couple of months, and I've decided that I've had zero positive impact on the process, so we're not going to do that any longer. We vary between 25 and 30 vacancies and have never budged from that. So it begs the question if we really need all the committees and if we should look at maybe consolidating some committees. I don't know. I think we need to do some work on that. But I thought what I would do in the interim while we sort through that is maybe highlight one each week. And the one that comes to mind for me is the Voter Information Committee, because if we had our Voter Information Committee, they could help us get committee people. So the pitch there is that they can't even meet, because they only have two people. They don't have a quorum. And as a result, organizing the debate that Joe just talked about, the two people that are on the committee assisted the League of Women Voters as private citizens. They were interested enough to do that. I cleared it with Emily that that was okay to do. So I would encourage anyone. It was a fabulous committee. Two women had been on it very long-term and chose to retire, and then unfortunately, our chair got a new job that prevented her from contributing, from staying on the committee. But they were a very collaborative group, worked together. You don't need anything other than the desire to help. The two existing women will help you through the process. So that's my pitch. Voter Information Committee.
Thank you, Mary. And that list is published in our weekly packet under Correspondence as well. Anyone else? Don?
This is for the next time. Go ahead. I'd like to hold back the minutes. If you've read them, there are a number of votes that were not unanimous in them, and it doesn't identify who it was who voted for or against, just like that clarified before we vote on them.
Okay. We're going to hold the minutes from the meeting on March 27th, 2023, until our next meeting. And Don, you will relay what you have for information to Danielle and Patience.
I was kind of hoping that the Board Secretary wouldn't know who was who voted in each direction, because there's a number of them, and I don't believe they were the same people all the time.
Okay. Go ahead with the rest of the consent. Oh, go ahead, Mary.
Maybe each of us can look at it and see which ones we didn't support, because I'm certain I would remember that.
You're pitching that we watch our own reruns.
Yeah. Well, no, we're just reading. You should remember what you supported and what you didn't.
All right. Consent agenda A and C, please.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the use of Dome Park on May 27th, 2023, for the Garden Club of Harwich, and also that we accept the resignation of Elizabeth Harder from the Community Preservation Committee effective May 1st, 2023, and send her a letter of thanks for her commitment to the committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. New business, annual report to the Board of Selectmen by external auditors Powers and Sullivan. Welcome.
Thank you.
That's a long report.
It's a long report. We'll keep it brief.
Excellent report, actually. Just introduce yourselves for the record.
Mike, who has it up there? Good evening. Renee Davis, the Partner in Charge with Powers and Sullivan for your annual independent audit. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay.
With me is Romina Mameli. She was the onsite partner for the engagement. So we're both very involved in the audit and in reviewing your financial reports. And what we're going to do tonight is go over some of the results of the audit, the highlights. We will not read the whole report to you tonight. It is a pretty extensive financial report, so we're going to give you some highlights of it. We're happy to answer any questions as we go through or dig into any area that you might be interested in. And go through them. There is a management letter this year, so we'll talk about that at the end just very briefly.
Great.
So the financial audit objectives, and we talk about this every year, but it's really important, is we do all of this work in going through to be able to give an opinion on your financial statements. Our objectives are just to be able to opine on your financial statements, that they are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We do our audit in accordance with both generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted government auditing standards. So two sets of standards, which is much more in-depth than a regular private corporation would be. Our responsibilities are to plan and perform the audit, to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that your financial statements are free of material misstatement and are fairly presented. What that means is we come in and we look at your ledgers. We look at your internal controls. We look at what your people are doing every day to keep your financial records accurate, and we test the information that's in those reports. We test certain transactions. What we want to make clear is that we're not looking at every transaction, right? We're not here every day watching what people do. And when we come in for the audit, we're here for, you know, the audit takes a couple of weeks in total. So, you know, we're looking at a select number of transactions. We do a risk assessment to say what numbers in your financial statements would be the most risky, the most likely of being misstated, and we do audit procedures to verify that that information is fairly presented. And management, your people, are responsible for reviewing the financial statement and taking responsibility for them. So we, as a matter of practice, take your ledgers, and we help to put together this report, right? So sometimes there's, you know, a misinterpretation that this is our report. This is the town's report. We own three pages of this, which are our audit opinion. But we do help to put it together. Once we've drafted it, we give it back to management. Management reviews it and gives us a clean, the okay, and a written representation to us saying, yep, we take responsibility, and you can go ahead and finalize it. So based on our audit for now, we're talking about June 30th, 2022, it was a positive result. It's an unmodified audit opinion or a clean audit opinion, that there's nothing that we found that would lead us to believe that your financial statements are materially misstated. So we believe that they're accurate. No instances of non-compliance that we found that need to be recorded and reported in accordance with government auditing standards. Now, we do go through and look specifically at what you have for federal expenditures to see if any one year you spend over $750,000 in federal awards, you would get to the point of having to have what they call a single audit, where you'd get a whole nother report of your federal expenditures. You still have not hit that, right? So there's a chance, right? ARPA is coming down the road, and likely, depending on when you spend your share of the ARPA funds, that could bring you over that threshold in any one year. Typically, because you're part of a regional school, your school grants aren't getting you there, which is what most communities do. But we do look at your internal controls to make sure that when you get to that point, that you're set up to be able to report those expenditures accurately. So 2022 is your sixth year of doing the big report, an annual comprehensive financial report. And what you're doing every year is you're submitting this report to the Government Finance Officers Association, we call the GFoa, and they review the report. Three reviewers review it to see if it's in compliance with these standards, and you get a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So you did get that again for fiscal year '21. The '22 report has been submitted to the GFoa for that award as well. So within your annual comprehensive financial report is your audit, your regular audit report with a lot of other supplemental information to give the readers a more in-depth look at your finances. And so I'm going to go through just the sections of what I'll call the ACFA, or the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, without flipping through the report itself. The first part of it is the introductory section. It has management's transmittal letter. That, if you just did regular financial statements, there would be no transmittal letter. That gives management the opportunity to introduce the report and to give readers an overview of the economy in the town and some of the capital and financial plans of the town. So overall review, that wouldn't be found any place in a regular set of financial statements. You also have your certificates for the award from the prior year and organizational chart. So there's some other information that introduces the financial section themselves. Then when you get into the financial section, I told you, we only own the audit opinion. Our audit opinion is on pages 13 to 15, and it's clean. Clean, nothing of issue there. It's a little bit different this year in format. The AICPA actually dictates what we put in that letter. So the, you know, if you're comparing it to last year, it looks a little bit different. It's a little bit longer, and really, the changes are just meant to really bring home what you're responsible for and to make it very clear what our responsibilities are. After our opinion is management's discussion and analysis, or the MDNA. That tells readers why, what went up and down in your financial position and why things change. So if you're just reading the financial statements and you want to know why your net position went up or went down, the MDNA gives just a comparison of two years and tells you why things changed from one to the next. Then we have the financial statements themselves, a very small part of this report. The financial statements take up the first part, and then the notes to the financial statements are really very in-depth and should be read. If you're looking at the financial statements, you should be looking at the notes as well, especially related to OPEB and pension, because there's a lot of information in the notes. That's 20, pages 27 to 75 of the report. We'll take you through that. That's your financial statements, if you're just issuing financial statements. Then there's some required supplementary information. The biggest part of that, so it's your budget to actual, that's your general fund. Usually, that's the most important thing that you want to look at if you're looking at your results of your general fund operations, if you're looking at what's leading into free cash, why your free cash numbers are where they are. And there's 10-year schedules for your retirement, your pension liability, and your OPEB liability. So pension and OPEB, they're sort of walking side by side. But remember, pension, your net pension liability is your share of Barnstable County Retirement's total pension liability. So every two years, they hire an actuary who comes in and determines what your share of their liability is. So it's a 10-year trend to see how that liability is changing over time. Hopefully, the goal is for that liability to go down over time. You are on a funding schedule to be able to fund that, to have it fully funded. Of course, market conditions change that from one year to the next. And then same schedules are there for your OPEB or other post-employment benefit liabilities. That is health insurance that you pay to retirees, for the most part. You're not part of a joint plan. You own that liability. So the town hires an actuary to be able to determine that liability, and you have to have it remeasured every two years. You don't, there's no legal requirement to fund it. You are on track to have that. You're putting money towards funding it, not the same level that you are for the retirement system, but you are setting money aside and investing it over time to get that liability down, and it has come down because of that. After the required supplementary information, you have other supplementary information. That gives you a more in-depth look at some of the columns in the financial statements. So in your financial statement, you have something called non-major governmental funds. Your combining schedules will tell you exactly what's in those funds, from federal grants, state grants, revolving funds, and so forth. It's sort of those other non-general fund funds, and it just gives you more information than you would have in just the set of financial statements themselves. That gives you all the way to 106, and then pages 107 to 123 are the statistical tables. That gives 10 years' worth of financial information of your financial statements, full accrual, fund-based financial statements. So you can see over time why things are going up or going down, or how they're going up and going down. It also gives you trend information on your tax rate, tax rate, tax collections, your outstanding debt, your operating indicators, capital indicators. So anyone really wanting to do a deeper dive will give you 10 years' worth of information, and that's the stats section or statistical section. So again, so I'll talk a little bit about the MDNA and the results of operations this year for fiscal year '22. Your general fund budget was $78.3 million, including amounts that you had carried over from the prior year or your encumbrances. You budgeted to use some of your reserves. Remember, your free cash was up quite a bit. You budgeted to use $7.7 million of a combination of free cash and a little bit of overlay. And your revenues came in very strong. Revenues were in over budget by $3.5 million. Your expenditures came in under budget by $2.3 million. So the net, so if you're budgeting to use free cash, you're budgeting for your balance to go down, right? You're budgeting to use some of your savings account for your, you know, to fund some capital projects and to fund some reserves. Other than that, your budgetary results are positive. So the net difference between those came into a net budgetary increase of only $394,000. So planned use and positive results. You do, here in the town, have a free cash policy of what you want free cash to be at and what you will and will not use free cash for. There was a bit of a push a few years ago. Your bond rating got raised up to AAA, and there was a push at that time to get that to happen, to make sure you had good, strong financial policies. That was one of them. So you were slightly, you were slightly over, and we're going to talk about that a little bit. You, your free cash has been going up. You've had some positive results. You've had some flexibility there to be able to use that money for some one-time things in accordance with your policies. So general fund, overall budgetary, small increase, $394,000. So over $70 million budget. That's not a lot of money, but it was a positive result. Showed strong controls. So we look on a budgetary basis to make sure that you have a process to record things timely, to record things in the proper accounts, and to make sure that what town meeting voted for your budget is indeed what's on the ledger, and that when you're charging expenditures, you're charging them to the right line items, and that you have a good process to not overspend any of your budget line items, so that there would be, either it comes to zero or there's turnbacks. And then at the end of the year, you have some legal opportunities to be able to move money around if you need to. Other than the general fund, you have the Community Preservation Act fund. The Community Preservation Act, you know, is optional. The town voted to enact that to be able to charge a surcharge on the real estate taxes and to get part of that matched by the State Trust Fund, to be able to get excess funds to be used for the community preservation purposes, so historic preservation, open space, affordable housing, and so forth. That fund balance had $6.6 million at the end of the year, increased by $1 million. So that, you know, that can have ups and downs. It's not planned to just grow over time, but to be able to use for those purposes. One of your major funds is your Town Capital Fund. That, if you're looking at the financial statements, has a deficit balance of $12.9 million. That's not, it's not alarming. The reason for that is because you have short-term debt. So with governmental fund financial statements, you don't record, you record proceeds of debt once you go long-term. You had $20 million still in short-term loans out with Mass Clean Water Trust at the end of the year. So that's the only reason. It's just a matter of timing from short-term debt to long-term debt to get that to go positive. Expenditures were $3 million in that fund, mostly for road maintenance and wastewater construction projects. And the long-term debt that was issued was $5.1 million with $359,000 worth of premiums. Your enterprise funds, outside of your governmental funds, you run water and wastewater as separate sort of business-type activities, meaning that you're charging services to be able to recover the costs of running those programs. So we don't expect big fluctuations from time, you know, from year to year. Water had a net increase, I'm sorry, a net decrease of $19,000 from the prior year, and wastewater had an increase of $285,000. So status quo. We look at your billing system, your collections, making sure you're accruing for anything, any usage at the end of the year, to make sure those funds are running as operated, but they have their own separate budgets. Finally, the end of your financial statements. You have fiduciary funds. Fiduciary funds don't roll up to your full accrual financial statements at all. That is where your OPEB trust fund is, so the money you're putting aside to be able to fund that long-term liability. You prefunded $800,000 in fiscal year '22. This is the new news here, right, with everybody for fiscal year '22. At the end of the year, we know what the markets look like. You had a net investment loss in that fund of $269,000. Unfortunately, June 30th, 2022, that was the case with a lot of things. Even the private purpose trust funds, the scholarship funds, had net investment losses. So we just have to remember back that we've had some really good gains in the years before that, and that sort of, you know, you have investment policy. You're sticking to your investment policies and running the game. So it's not unusual, and that's what everybody really saw for that year. So again, we talked about the pension and the OPEB liabilities. I'll just give you those numbers, because they're really a big part of your financial statements at the end of the year. Your share of Barnstable County Retirement was $22.6 million for governmental, just the governmental share, and then $1.6 million was recorded in your water and wastewater enterprise funds. OPEB was $37.1 million for governmental liabilities and $2.5 million for your business type. So big liabilities, but they're not, they're nothing that you're going to have to pay right away, right? They're long-term liabilities. And again, with pension, the plan is, under Mass. General Law, there's a funding schedule. You just have to revalue every two years, and you have to pay your share into the kind of retirement system. of retirement system. The other things we look at and you do again have policies related to debt service and what debt service you will keep as part of your operating budget. You're actually slightly below what your policies would allow you to have for debt service as a part of your budget. You had twenty-six point five million dollars in governmental debt. Debt service was about five point three percent of the operating budget. Water Enterprise had five point two million and the short-term debt, again, was that Mass Clean Water, twenty million dollars. I think that's some of it's going long-term, maybe next year, a portion of it. And finally, as we're doing the audit, we look at and test your internal controls and always if there's anything of significance that we have to report to you, then we have to do that in, in writing. So there is one management letter comment this year. I know you're aware of it because I've seen the memos go back and forth. So when we are looking at your budget to actual and your tax recap, again, your budget's over seventy million dollars. Town meeting votes a budget, it goes on the tax recap, it gets approved by the state and that's how you operate throughout the year. You, there was actually an error on the recap for fiscal year twenty-two where the amount that was raised in taxes was over, was overstated by, and I don't have a number in front of me, is it one point?
Yeah, just under one point eight million.
Yeah, one point eight million dollars. So what happens, right? So it's, it was a mathematical error that wasn't caught throughout the process. When we come in and we look to tie out your budget, it didn't. That's when it was discovered. There's, what the town has done, what we've recommended is to make sure that that can't happen again, right? How did it happen? What can we do to make sure that that doesn't happen going forward? You can't kind of, you can't back that up. You reported it to the state, the Division of Local Services is aware of it, they know about it, of course, we know about it. And you've put processes in place, they actually made us check already for next year to make sure that that didn't happen again in fiscal twenty-three. It did not, it added across and I think it was just a clerical, clerical error at the time. But just, you know, it was significant enough that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of it and knew that it happened. It also is likely there's, you had two years of very high free cash and although you've had really good, strong, positive budgetary results, that did increase your free cash for the year. So that was part of, part of the result of that. And there was nothing else, right? There was?
No, that's what I meant.
Do you have questions on that?
Nope.
Nope.
Go ahead.
So again, I don't know, I want to go through again, you know, what, what we do as part of the audit, there's a lot of notes here on management's responsibilities. You know, there's been some turnovers, right? So we've been coming here for a number of years and you've had, this was the first year, we had a new finance director and now she's gone and, you know, Amy's been here for a lo, was here for a long time and now she's gone. So there's been some turnovers in key financial positions. You know, what you, you do have documented policies and procedures and operating procedures. That's always helpful when you have turnover to make sure that some of the key things that have to happen are documented. So when new people come in or people are filling in in between, that you're not missing a beat, that your finances can stay strong and that you know that things are being reconciled and being done on a regular basis. We didn't see any issues with that. We were getting a heads up, you know, we're having a turnover, Amy's leaving, you know, what do you need for us? So it wasn't, it didn't interfere at all with our audit for fiscal year twenty-two. People were still really on top of things. You know, it's a tough market out there. I know that there are a lot of turnovers in financial positions, so you just want to make sure you stay on top of that. Everything's been, you know, people have been very cooperative to us. Again, we were able to get this out. Really, the, we were waiting for the OPEB report came in in December. Other than that, the financials were, were in really good shape before that. So everything went smoothly as far as we were concerned. You know, as far as going forward, of course, we have to take a look to make sure that if someone new comes in, we're looking at what they do. Are they doing things the same way? Do they understand the sys, you know, are they using the same internal controls? And we'd go through that risk assessment process as well. And we've been talking to the new treasurer sort of as she just came in the door about her new processes. So, you know, our goal again is to make sure these reports are materially accurate, not looking at every transaction. That's what your people do. That's what management's responsible for doing, for reviewing every warrant, reviewing every bill, making sure that you have good, strong budgetary controls and that the reports that are coming out of your ledger system are accurate and everything's done timely. And we didn't have any issues as far as that went. Again, I went through our, our responsibilities. We have to report to management, that's what we're, those charge with governance, that's what we're doing here tonight and make sure that we're in front of you and if you have any questions for us, that we're here to answer them for you.
Excellent, thank you. Joe, do you have anything to add?
Just that, believe it or not, we look forward to these presentations every year. We certainly do appreciate the work of Powers and Sullivan. And then to the particular item in the management letter, I met with our town clerk. As you know, the town clerk is responsible going forward for the tax rate recap and I think it's fair to say that Ms. Mitchell and I are on the same page and we're using the document that will end up being used next, or this fall, I should say, when you set the tax rate to really base on our motions and everything going forward. So we've taken all of that information to heart, we've already adjusted our actions and made sure that what happened in the past won't be repeated. And that's the essence of the memo that I also put in your packet.
Thank you, Joe.
But I want to thank Renee and Mermina for being here and when they are here, they're, they're very collaborative and so we appreciate our relationship with Powers and Sullivan.
Thank you, Joe. Larry?
Well, it's a nice report, it looks like we're in good shape. And it's a lot of detail, I'm hoping a lot of people in town read it and get informed about our finances. I also say it's a different meeting than last year where they were, because of COVID and ARPA, we had, you were changing reporting requirements and so it was a bit more confusing. Your report this year is more straightforward. I think you've answered my question, but you made a comment, you know, that everything's recorded timely and correctly. And we mentioned one mistake, but my question is, process-wise, do you feel we have the process in place to catch a mistake before, as, as quickly as we can?
So you are reconciling timely, right? So what ha, what that means is the balances that are on your ledger, cash is being recorded timely, we, we haven't seen any, right? So we're not here every day, we're here a couple of times a year.
I'm talking about the process, do you think we have the process?
Yes, I, I do. It has, every indication that we have is that things are recorded timely. We come in to do interim work and we're able to look during the year at some of your transactions. We haven't had an issue with that. Now, I will say, you've had some changes in personnel, so there's no guarantee that that's going to happen if you don't have the same people sitting in those seats, but historically, we haven't seen a problem with that.
Yeah, the other thing is, I know it comes up every year and it scares me every year is OPEB and benefit numbers. Because even though they're large, there's no getting around it. And I'm, I'm always nervous about how government calculates financial gain. They always pick an interest rate that none of us individuals can get anywhere near when they do their, their numbers and then it comes back later and say, we know more and more, so. Not that I don't trust government, but I, I'm scared.
No, I mean, it's, right? You get to pick, the, the actuaries work with management to pick your, your discount rate, that is true, right? So you don't have a whole lot to say over Barnstable County, they're going to pick the rate that's right. The only thing I will say, the actuaries are picking it with the county and it has to get approved by the state. But yes, are they picking a rate that it would be hard to, to make? Certainly last year, but it's a long-term expected rate of return and the only thing accounting standards do to try to correct for that is you have to have it remeasured every two years and if you didn't make that, it hits your liability. So it, so it's going to catch up with you every two years. If your discount rate is too high, eventually your liability will end up going up.
Again, thank you, a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a very thorough report, appreciate it. I, I also appreciated your comments stated in several ways about the future and the turnover and everything and I just want everybody to know, especially the public, that we also share those concerns and we're watching to make sure that as we, as we have this turnover filled, that we stay in the same place for the audit, both for the standard and pores rating and for the fact that we have been pretty solid through the years. So we do share that same concern.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
Thank you, I'll echo some of what my brother said. Do appreciate it, I look at this as our report card and I think we made the honor roll, so I'm pretty happy with that. And I think Joe has done a good job with some of the changes in personnel, having some interims in here who were very solid and then creating a transition period. So although there's been transition, I'm pretty comfortable that we're managing that. And by we, I mean Mr. Powers.
It's very common right now across the state that there's, there's issues with getting people, you have challenges because of location, so it's, you want to get the right people.
Thank you.
Glad to hear you say that from that side of the table because we're not often listened to on that and there is a tremendous amount of turnover, so. Great report, I read it once, the third time I'll retain most of it. That won't be this week, but like Mary said, that's an honor roll report card. I think we've done a great job and the town Harwich is in great shape. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If only we could get Dr. Carpenter to, to present that many papers that quick. Scott, that's not a slam.
Mr. Chairman, if I could introduce the next topic?
You can.
So coming up to your table to present is our Director of Information Technology, Sarah Eden. I will just put out there as one of our newer directors, Sarah has fit in perfectly in the role seamlessly and for that reason, I would task her with several major projects. So she is here tonight to tell you how we're making progress on several migrations on new platforms and that is the effort to get us into the late twentieth century. And as you know, she did a phenomenal presentation and I think a very solid capital outlay plan for the next five years to continue that progress. Before I turn it over to Sarah, I do want to say that she is well-versed in explaining what's happening with Office three sixty-five and the Munis upgrade. I would just caution everybody that she's aware of the hiccups that we have. She's not the responsible party, but rather she is the expert that's getting us through those hiccups. So with that, it's my pleasure to have our Director of Information Technology present to you this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so as Joe said, so first start with updating you on Office three sixty-five and as most of you have noticed, like last week, we went through the initial bulk migration. So back in February is when we started, Barnstable County IT had contracted with a vendor to start the process of migrating our emails and we did some test groups here in Town Hall. And once everything went smoothly with that, we started going and migrating everybody in the middle of, of March. And last week, we took all the emails that were on the old server in, well, actually at the fire station, but here in town and migrated everybody up to email up to the three sixty-five environment. And yes, there were some hiccups and, you know, as I like to call it, a patchwork quilt of technology over the years. And so we've got everybody smoothed out with that and starting this week, I believe it'll be either tomorrow or Wednesday, we're, they're just finishing up a few things on the, the technical side of where to point routers and DNS things for the, the world to get email to us. They will flip the switch to having the emails start being name@harwich-ma.gov and that'll be across the board for everybody. Old emails will still work, so the public emailing us, you'll still get your emails, but as you reply and send out new emails, they'll represent the new unified harwich-ma.gov. Our next steps with the three sixty-five upgrade will be, there's two more parts to it. We're going to be doing the data migration so that we'll be getting all the information from the old servers up into the three sixty-five SharePoint and OneDrive environment and that will create a much more smoother thing for, you know, sharing files and stuff between departments and lots of, even more so, not just the twenty, late twentieth century, this is like twenty-first century now technology with three sixty-five, which will be great. So we'll, that'll probably start doing, end of April, we'll start working with departments and, and buildings to get the, them upgraded on that. And the other, third part of it is the phone migration. So what that will involve is with Microsoft three sixty-five, we have Teams and some departments have been using it to chat, like quick chat instead of calling, like I've gotten a lot, hey, can you come fix this? And so what that'll be doing is replacing the very old and unsupported phone system like in, in Town Hall and over at the Fire Department that were on the, the short hall system and various other buildings have different phone systems. So I couldn't transfer a phone call here from Town Hall over to the community center. So once we get everybody up on the Teams environment, it'll be very easy to type in their name and transfer phone calls throughout the town, which will make it, so if somebody accidentally calls and winds up, like, hey, I'm looking for the Council on Aging and they found a department in Town Hall, they can easily be transferred over there, which will make it so much better for our residents. So, and we already have one department that is running fully operational on the, the Teams environment for their phone system and that's the golf course because they had gotten struck by lightning and it knocked out their phone system. So we were able to, because they were going to be our test guinea pigs because they were a small department, we were able to easily just get them up and running in, in a matter of a, a day or two and so they didn't skip, skip a beat on that. And for the reports we've got, they, it's been great for them there. The next thing is Munis and we will be going live on the new Munis system on Thursday at noon. And on that note, as Joe had mentioned with the, what is it, the tax bills that are due May first, also, so between noon on Thursday, April thirteenth to probably about noon on April fourteenth, the, yeah, the Treasurer and Collector's Office will, will not have access to the town software while we're doing the data migration and therefore they will be unable to assist taxpayers to pay bills. So they just wanted to us to make sure that everybody plans accordingly for, for those two days of not being able to pay, pay tax bills. We've, so over the past couple of weeks, the, we've had several training sessions and they were taped, these were hosted by Tyler. And what we'll, we'll be doing is using three sixty-five in the SharePoint, creating a, kind of like a web, an internal webpage on SharePoint and I'll be putting the Munis information there. So kind of taking our new technology and be able to be a resource spot for new employees or, you know, if somebody's like, oh, hey, I forgot what I learned in training, they can go back and reference that. So it'll be a nice, easy flow of technology to help everybody be comfortable with the change. And so that's the, the major update. Any questions?
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, anything to add?
Just again, to thanks Sarah for her efforts, again, no rest for the weary, started right out. You know, the timing of both the migration and the Munis upgrade, it's not the way we wanted them to go because they were on separate tracks, but the timing in the end will work out great and we'll be advertising greatly about that outage later this week, but it's going to, we really think bear fruit going forward. The Munis upgrade, I think, is something that everyone's looking forward to and it, it's really going to change how we operate going forward. So a little bit of anxiety, a little bit of headaches, but all in all, on the right track and that's in large part to Sarah's leadership.
Thank you. Mary?
That's fabulous. I'd just like to thank Sarah, she has helped me immensely with these latest changes and the best part of it, with all she's got going, way more technical than I need, she's very patient with me and made things work on my phone, made them work on my laptop, so my personal thanks and this is just pretty exciting to see what that phone system can do. I don't understand Munis enough to know that, but I hear that's big do, so thank you for all you've done and are doing.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity to visit Sarah in the executive suites of the IT office last week. I wasn't as concerned about the, the actual devices, I mean, she's very knowledgeable and there's been a lot of- She's very knowledgeable and there's been a lot of, there's a big ask that we're asking of her. Changing servers, Munis update, email change. And it's a radically different system that she's getting up and running. And I'm very impressed with how she's done this so far, so thanks.
Yep.
Larry?
Well, she already helped me migrate. I don't say add to that, but I've migrated, by the way, you know that. On the tax collection, one of the things is, not a major issue, but it's concerning my, my personal life is I get, I get a tax bill. And I like to pay it right away, otherwise my, my filing system is such, I may lose it. And mostly if I do it online, I haven't been able to do it for a week or two after I get it in the mail. Will this catch that up then? So it'll be the same, same timing?
I'm going to say eventually because right now we have a third-party vendor that does the, the tax bill. So I know there's a delay in when they're sent out and then it getting up to the third-party vendor to be able to, to pay online. But with the, the upgraded Munis, Tyler Hub is their rebranding, their name. You can do, you can do, paying your, all your taxes, like personal property, motor vehicle, you can use Munis. They call it citizen self-service where you could, as a citizen, go in and make an account and log in and, and pay your various tax bills. They also have modules for that, that like if the Rec Department had programs. So there's a lot of growth that we can do with upgraded Munis to make it easier, not just for staff members, but for residents as well.
Because if I looked at it, I'd say, okay, either improve Munis or delay mailing the tax forms out a few days. You know, we can do one or the other. But no, great job. It's nice for us to get, get up to date in some technology.
Yes.
Or you could come in and pay in person and get a sticker.
At the chamber. Great job.
We see Sarah with that job.
It was not quite as challenged. I was a little challenged on my email. But Ryan, I think it was, came up to the office and set it up on my computer, so.
Ryan, Ryan has been a, a big help from, from the county. He's very knowledgeable and, you know, he's helped me along in this and stuff, so.
Great.
Give a shout out to Ryan as well.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right. Next up is discussion on rate adjustments for 204 Sisson Road. Kara? We will be holding a public hearing on this, but I saw no reason not to get an introduction to this. In case the boards wanted to adjust anything now, but we will be having a public hearing in the next two weeks on this. Kara?
All right, thank you. So the varying difference that you'll see is that we've built different levels of structure for the use schedule for events and programs. So we've added a municipal category to make it clear that if a conservation department needed to have the room for a meeting, there's no charge from municipal office to use our space. That's very consistent with other towns. We have our for-profit rates, a discount for a nonprofit, and then there's also the resident rate. And that is really being just talking to a lot of residents and talking about how the rates would affect them when they've used the building in the past and how we can help account for that. So we've made it very clear, right now, we're going from, the current rate would be three, it's three hours for $100. What we're trying to switch to for our first shift in rates is $100 an hour. So instead of essentially $33.3 dollars an hour, we're trying to encourage that we have improvements being done. We need to make a start into our new rates. And 100 an hour is pretty consistent with most venues around this area. So we're switching to that. For meetings only, it's about 75 an hour. And those are for the smaller rooms. If you just need, you know, the Harwich Guild uses our facility every so often for a board meeting and other companies like that, we would be discharging them that hourly rate for meetings. So not too much of a difference, but enough that we can start making a positive change to our rate structure. The, the long-term studio rental is about a $50 increase per studio. So that's to start encouraging the new rates based on square footage. We cleaned it up so that the square footage is counted for throughout the facility, ranging from less than 100 square feet to over 901 square feet. Each level has a different category for a rate increase, so most rooms will see a $50 increase. Some will see more, but that is because of the amenity that they have in the room, such as water. There are some old rooms that had air conditioning because they were computer labs, so that is accounted for as well in that rate increase. Then the next would be the class and workshop. Right now, it's $15 per class, so we've put it as a flat fee of $150 for the room rental. In addition to $1 per student, that'll help us build a fund for materials and supplies that we might need when it comes to classes and programs that we're offering as well. The difference between the class and the workshop is a class is limited to one to three hours in length and a minimum of six classes, maximum of eight. And a workshop is going to run from three to six hours in length. And that is basically how we deter what's, what's what. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'll start with Larry.
I don't really, I, I do have one question, but, but before I get there, I, I, I'm not going to comment on the fee structure. You've done a lot of research into it, it sounds like, so I'm comfortable with the information you presented. My question was more of a side question. Is Wi-Fi access there?
So in some rooms, yes. So we just recently had to put new routers in for the staff that are there. So our housing now has a new router and the future slated municipal office has a router, but we also added one in our activity center. So the renters for the auditorium and cafeteria actually will have access to Wi-Fi. If you're a guest, you have access to Wi-Fi now too. The next step would be that we need to have Comcast come in and actually do a site survey to put boosters throughout the building. So that's to be evaluated. So the actual studios do not have it.
And Open Cape runs down the, the highway there. Does that help you? Another alternative to look at in addition to Comcast?
So we can certainly look at it. It's not an issue that we can't have Wi-Fi. The issue is at what expense do we want to have Wi-Fi?
Exactly. That's why I'm saying maybe.
Right.
I mean, one time Open Cape was far more expensive, but I, I read in the paper that they've come down to be competitive. I don't, it'd be interesting to look at. I don't know that.
Certainly. I did learn that Comcast was actually just installed in the facility back in 2017. When it wasn't really there before. They actually had it wired in from the street. So that was intriguing to, to know. But the studios can and have in the past called Comcast on their own and actually had routers put in their room. It's just a switch in the facility that gets essentially turned on by Comcast.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may be the only one who feels this way, but I'm not happy with the, the non-spread between nonprofits, for-profits and residents. There's an awful lot of nonprofits in this town who do a lot of things for the community. Some of whom actually get grants from the town. And the irony is, you're turning around, there's no difference in the auditorium rental. It really boils down to the gymnasium, I suppose, if they all want to exercise, and that's great. But if, if you're looking at this schedule, it just, it's really close. And I would hope that you could kind of push it sideways into the left and the right columns to add a little bit to those, give the nonprofits a break. Because there really, there's a lot of things that this town doesn't do through the government that does, that it does through nonprofits. And I think we should recognize that.
Thank you, Dawn. Anything else?
Nope.
Mary?
I'm just curious, the, the last part you talked about with the class rate structure and the workshop rate structure. What's the difference between that and just renting the room, huh? Is it, is it different rooms? Is it?
It's the same room. It's, it comes down to, basically, the minimum was, it was $15 per class, how it is structured right now, with a minimum of six classes. If they rented that, it's $150 for a room fee. So I just took the fact that they'd have to pay for a room fee, but we'd also want to incur a $1 per student charge. It's the same thing that come the changes for the facility, if we get granted that and we're able to make the modifications, we would apply $1 per ticket for restoration fee. It allows us an opportunity to kind of supply our own little fund to help different projects. You know, maybe it's a, we need a locking wardrobe for craft supplies or for paintbrushes and other supplies. That particular fee would help distribute that cost.
So the other rentals are somebody's just renting it not for a class?
Right, so it could be a cocktail reception, another, we do art galleries and exhibits, but it could be an outsider doing it. It could be, we have someone coming in, you know, we have a watercolor class versus somebody who's just renting it for, say, a birthday party. So it's a differentiation as far as we can control how many people are in a class and workshop. But through a private or public rental, we don't necessarily control 100% of their guest list. We're leaving it to either ticket sales or that renter giving us that value of information.
Okay, thank you. The, the numbers look fine to me.
Great job and great approach. I think unlike Dawn, I, I think there's a cost to this. And I think you've, you've demonstrated that you've been getting fees based on cost. And though I appreciate Dawn's comment, I think that there's always the avenue of coming to the Board of Selectmen for a room rate waiver. Dawn would happily pay that.
Oh, no, not, not in perpetuity.
Not, okay, not in perpetuity. But they certainly have an avenue where they can come back before us and Carolyn's in the back of the room. Hate to put her on the spot. Is there a different fee for residents and nonprofits than there are for-profits at the community center?
I know the answer. I love it.
I knew you would. I think I know the answer too.
So the community center does charge different rates based on if you are a for-profit or a nonprofit. And we do charge different rates for things like birthday parties and things like that as well.
Thank you. So I guess my point to that is there is an avenue for people in nonprofits to get a reduced rate in another building that the town has it. This building happens to be one that has been under scrutiny for an awful long time. And we're trying to prove and follow through on all of our statements on covering costs and indirect costs. So I think it's a great approach and certainly will support it. As far as the artists, the cultural portion of this, you have the benefit of being in the building with these people. How mu, how mu, how was this received from the tenants that are in there now?
They've kind of seen the numbers, so they're, you know, it's, I wouldn't say it's even mixed. A lot of them, when I say it's a $50 increase, they're like, oh, okay, that's fine. They've been scared that it would be hundreds of dollars and they wouldn't be able to attain that. So the concept is keeping with the idea that it's available for them and it's cost-effective. So those that it may seem $50 is too much, I have kind of advised them that, again, we'll work at it, we'll work towards it. There's a lot to still be considered right now that leaves everything up in the air. So until we actually know moving forward, this is going to be their rate, there's really nothing we can talk about concretely with that.
And then unrelated, but related, because I think it's going to happen around the same time. The RFP for the cultural part of that building? Are we going to see that soon? You have it.
Correct. My update from last week still stands. The purpose of this discussion tonight is to get a sense of where the board's at. Page two of your document is going to go a long way towards the value statement that the town has to put in the RP, meaning we give notice that we value these classrooms at these various square footages at these rates. And that's meant to indicate that's the floor. And so that's a critical part of the, the RP component.
Okay. Can we gauge support on those rates tonight so that we can start to move forward on this?
I'm supportive.
Do you want a motion?
No.
No. I absolutely support Kara.
We have to have a public hearing ultimately on all of the rates. Because these rates aren't changing much and with the statement we just heard, I don't, we can at least give a consensus of the board on where you're at. So Joe can proceed because I think it's important that we get this RFP out.
Yep.
And this licensing agreement or whatever we're going to call it done.
And Mr. Chairman, to your comments, Megan and I, working with Kara, will rely upon this chart as a general understanding. We'll also have language in there that if the hearing hasn't settled it, we will make reference to the fact that ultimately the Board of Selectmen has the right to establish the rates. So we're giving notice as to what Kara considers to be the value. We're moving forward on the RFP, but it also builds in the consideration that you still have to follow your policy.
Thank you. Dawn, do you support the, that part of the?
This part of it I do support.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
And I do as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, in follow-up to Dawn's comment about the rate structure, that this is step one, as I had said previously in my opening. And that is simply, this is just to get us to where we can sustain now. Once the work has been complete, I'll be back. Because there is a whole other rate structure and that one doesn't capture the varying difference between a for-profit to a nonprofit and a, and a resident or business in town. There is a varying scale, but just to get us started into some splash of we need to make progressive movement, this is step one.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on D, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a special permit application for a one-day wine and malt license for Bernadette Waystack at an event holding, being held on 24th, 2023 from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at 204 Sisson Road, Studio 205.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Boy, that's the art week that we just presented first, so we already discussed it to some extent.
And the art will look even better.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you.
Motion on E?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a special permit application for a one-day entertainment license for Cape Farm Supply, holding an event on June 24th, 2023 at 1590 Factory Road from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM with recorded and live music amplification outside.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
We, we can be pretty sure that he's not going, the noise is not going to bother anyone.
Not there.
Where he's located.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, then I move that we vote to approve a 2023 seasonal lodging house license renewal for Gingerbread House B&amp;B, 141 Division Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Motion on G?
Mr. Chair, I've moved that we vote to approve the 2023 seasonal license renewals for the Belmont condo trust doing business as Belmont Beach Club at 1 Belmont Road. One for the Common Vittlers and two for weekday entertainment, 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM inside, live-recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I always get a kick out of the live performers and patrons dancing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. And discussion, whole business. Discussion 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant articles. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You folks should have in front of you one addenda item. And that is a document that is entitled Proposed Additional Staff via Article 4, 2023 ATM. It's a single sheet, double-sided. Hopefully you all have that in front of you.
Got it.
Oh, it was on the table.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, under item, item A1, as you may recall, at your last meeting, you had directed me to do a deeper dive, if we could say that, into some of the warrant articles that are going to come before the town meeting, which is a mere three weeks away. See, when you get into weeks, you just bring it back to weeks. So we could say it's 21 days, but three weeks from tonight is town meeting. And there's been ample discussion on the capital plan. So in support of meeting your directive, you have my memorandum that you received in the packet on Friday. Mr. Chairman, I can certainly read it into the record or just take any questions you may have regarding that. And then the second document is in support of item A2.
I'd like you to go through it, Joe. You don't have to read it in its entirety. But really what this is for is to educate the public and to continue to educate the public until we get to town meeting.
Thank you.
If you just want to give us an explanation on the new positions, that would be great.
That was the second item. Did you still want me to give a brief overview of the capital?
Go brief overview of the capital first.
Thank you. So as you can see in the memorandum, when we talk about the capital outlay plan for this year's warrant, that actually encompasses Articles 15 through 21. I also want to mention that it impacts upon, I believe, what is Article 10, which relates to the use of cable funds. More on that later, but the vast majority of it is what you see in Article 15. So Article 15 is a standard article whereby the town meeting is being asked to adopt the capital plan. And as you all know, the capital plan is now a, a five-year span, so fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028. Then we have three articles that are focused on funding mechanism. So Article 16 is the capital outlay plan items that are funded from free cash. Article 17 is water retained earnings. that are funded from free cash. Article 17 is water retained earnings as a funding source, and Article 18 is Chapter 90 funds. And so if you recall, in Article, excuse me, on Article 16, there's a table that lists out the 15 projects that are to be funded by free cash. And I know in the discussions that there's been quite a bit of interest in the ironically lucky number 13, 204 Sisson Road, and that is a deeper dive on that. So I can show on the second page of the memo the specific breakdown on all the funds related to 204 Sisson Road for fiscal year 2024. And then last but not least, Articles 19, 20, and 21 are capital outlay articles. However, their funding source is far greater and far different. All three of these articles are related to borrowings, two of which are also predicated on debt exclusions. So when we talk about the capital plan at town meeting, we're talking specifically Articles 15 through 21 and one of the components of Article 10. I can certainly do a deeper dive. I know our director has remained for the same purpose to answer any questions that you folks may have regarding anything in the capital plan and certainly anything related to 204 Sisson Road.
Joe, we just go through, because I've been asked, 204 Sisson Road, what we're talking about doing with the 1.9 million?
Sure. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, the full request for fiscal year 24 to impact upon 204 Sisson Road is $1,982,427, the full funding of which is expected to come through our free cash. I will also mention, Mr. Chairman, as you can see that I put in the memorandum that we're relying upon just under 7.1 million in free cash, 4.9 million of which is used in support of our capital items. And so there's other articles that rely upon free cash, but if everything goes according to recommendations, the town will still have about, if memory serves correctly, about $200,000 left in free cash. So there is money available. Specifically to 204 Sisson Road, there's two categories of funding, and the first set of funding requests are related in support of programming needs. So these are impacting upon the building, but with a direct correlation to funding that our Director of Cultural Affairs would be seeking through programs. And then the second part of that is purely related to the structure itself, and these tie back to requests that our facilities maintenance manager is requesting. So breakdown on all of those, if you'd like, is of the 1.9 million, $472,427 is related to building renovations or refurbishments that have a direct correlation to program and therefore have a direct correlation of revenue. And then there's an additional 1.5, so $1,510,000 that are building system or building upgrades. And again, that ties back to Facilities Maintenance Director. I can go even further if you want for more detail, otherwise I can take questions.
We'll take questions.
Thank you.
Larry?
Now, I question Michael or comment. We've been, and I personally have been questioning this sometime, and as most people know me, I'm very cheap by nature, so I've been really questioning the budget. But I think we need to argue here in the town meeting that we have pushed these very hard, all these capital budget items. And we need to support these now and move ahead. So that's where my argument goes. We've talked to department heads, the capital needs items, the capital budgets. Team's gone through this, we've gone through it. Know much more we can do with it, and now to support it.
Thank you, Larry. Dawn?
Are we talking about both things now, or the grid, too, that was, we had tonight, or?
The staff grid, we'll do that second right now. We're just talking about capital.
Nothing.
Mary?
No, we've been through what we need to do at Sisson, and from the pile of things that are going on in Art Week, that place is going to be booming, and we need to spend the money to let Kara do what we hired her to do.
Just, Kara, do you have the number of what you projected could come out of the auditorium if we do this work? Sorry to put you on the spot. If you don't, that's fine. I believe it was five.
Yeah, it's a range, for sure. I mean, we can increase our rental capacity by at least 100%, and you're looking at, you know, 45,000 to 50,000 potential additional profit based on the new rate structure that'll come in based on these changes. We're also looking at the room being more different than what it is. And honestly, the number one thing I get all the time from people who've rented the facility before that won't come back yet, is, you know, geez, if those lights worked better, or if the lights worked, we'd be able to actually rent the building again. And my response to everybody that I've met since I've started is, well, come to town meeting and help me make that change. Because honestly, the light system doesn't work, so you can't light up the stage. So that has been a consistent factor that most people tell me why they won't rent anymore, or what it'll take for them to come back. And these changes are essential for that to happen.
Thank you. And to Larry's point, we have talked about this a lot. I'm hoping to continue to put this information out there, because these are the questions, is what's for what. And one of the recommendations out of our finance committee was that we don't do the repairs to the auditorium, and we only do the boiler. And for me, the only part of this that comes to the revenue side of this, to get that building helping to pay for itself, is doing the auditorium. So I don't know why we would even consider pulling that out. Certainly town meeting will get the opportunity to debate that, because there's lots of motions coming on splitting this. But this is an effort of the board and an effort of a lot of people in public to get this building to be at full use. And I hope that the artists in the building and everybody that enjoys the building comes out to town meeting with four or five of their friends and votes the capital plan as submitted, and then votes for these articles. So it's going to be out of our hands at town meeting, and there's certainly people that don't want to see us move forward with this building and are putting that out there. So please tell everyone you know to go to town meeting. Dawn, do you want to get into the chart?
Only to say that I really wish it had dollar figures associated.
Bouncing back and forth. Okay, Joe, there was a reason why we weren't putting exact dollar figures?
Even approximate. I don't care.
I know we have a chart.
The quick response is I ran out of time.
Okay.
But if I could combine the proposed additional staff document that you have and, you know, bring it back to the warrant. So what you have on page one are the eight, 8.0 FTE or full-time equivalent. So these are the new additions to staff. The first one is Planning Zoning Coordinator, which is a 1.0 FTE. So we consider that to be a one-person role that is full-time, and it's in the Building Department. Then there is a ZBA Clerk/Administrative Assistant. Now, you folks will recall this, I believe, because originally we were looking at a part-time position in the Building Department for a ZBA Clerk. Conservation made the cogent argument for Administrative Assistant. And so the role that you see there combines two positions that are recognized in our personnel bylaws and accomplish what building and conservation need for a ZBA Clerk, who will also be an Admin Assistant in Conservation. We have the Program Specialist 2 position. This is a 1.0 FTE. And again, this would be supporting operations in the community center. Again, 1.0 FTE is meant to be one person full-time. And related to that is a custodian, the 1.0 FTE in TPW, but that custodian would essentially be dedicated to the community center. And then last but by no means least of the adds to staff are the four firefighters that the Fire Chief has made the argument to you all for. And again, that's 4.0 full-time equivalents. We expect that to be four full-time firefighters. And in each of the instances, the language contained therein is better than mine. It's directly from those who are requesting it. So these are their arguments, I think very succinct, yet cogent arguments for these positions, and that explains all eight of the FTE. However, in a spirit of full disclosure, if you go to page two, there was always an expectation in the Building Department budgets that they would take the part-time Building Inspector role and move that from a 0.5 FTE to a 1.0. So that's going up by half of an FTE. So that takes a part-time role that I believe is unfilled right now and brings it up to the full-time level. So the net effect is 8.5 FTE positions in our budget. Now, specifically for right now, you can see how they draw right back to Appendix B. So when you look at the firefighters, you look on line 65, it breaks out specifically the salaries and wages line that's impacted by that, and all the other positions. Now, for me, I am loath to put out exact numbers, because I don't want to misquote what was factored in for overtime in the case of the firefighters. But certainly as we do the motions, meeting process, and as we continue to amass more information, I'll be looking to my partners in government, every one of these department heads, to help me have more information. So, you know, we'll put as much out there as we can, but again, you have the material and the references to specific line items. You have, as I've said, cogent descriptions of the same. And then really beyond that, it's just, I think, a conversation about what our programs look like with or without these positions.
Thank you, Joe. Dawn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I get what you're saying, but you're not going to be able to get away with that on town meeting floor and say, I'm loath to tell you. These are things that the town meeting has to adopt, and they're going to reasonably, I can reasonably anticipate, somebody's going to ask in each of these positions, well, what do they cost? So at some point or another, we got to be able to roll into that meeting with at least an idea to be able to put out on the floor.
Joe?
So I will try to be clear. I'm loath to say to you folks, as the sole person in front of you this evening to present this material, what I'm trying to demonstrate is that I'll be relying upon the village that stands behind me, and that includes members of the board. You folks have endorsed these positions. I'd look for you folks to help with the discussion. But what I'm trying to say, in the evening of April 10th, the messaging that I have tonight is going to be enhanced by the messaging that I can bring forward, once we know what the motions actually are, once we confirm all the funding sources. And I won't be the only speaker. So that's why I'm saying I'm loath. I will look to the Fire Chief to speak as passionately and as directly as he can to his budget better than I can. Every one of these requesters can speak far better to their budget specifically than I can generally. For me, I plan on making the argument tonight and at town meeting that I stand with the Board of Selectmen to add these positions to our staff because of the direct correlation to the programs that will be offered to our residents, taxpayers, and visitors in the town. But I'm not going to be able to do as eloquent a job tonight without my big old binder and my team behind me. And that's what I mean by I'm loath to say it tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Anything further, Dawn? Larry?
No, no, I'm fine with it.
Mary?
No, I like this. Is this, this isn't going in the warrant, correct?
No, it's not in the warrant, because that is sealed and delivered.
Yeah.
It can be incorporated into the motions book, which is the addendum that we've done during my tenure, where we not only put out the motions that we expect to be made, but any other material that the board thinks will be helpful in this effort. So I can add certainly a broader version of this with more information. I can add the memorandum that talks about capital. It's really, I'll say it this way, it's the cost of paper, not that we want to kill trees, but, you know, we want to have materials ready so that when the voters come in to check in to get their voter card, they can take any information that they feel that they need to rely upon. And we'll also have everything related on the website.
I think this would be helpful to have people see this.
I agree. And Joe, I just, it's, I know Finance Committee has submitted something with what their numbers are, or what they believe they are. And I know there's a bit of a disconnect to reality with what they're doing right now. And one that surfaced today was the wastewater superintendent. Their number that they had was different than the number that Ann Marie and Dan had given them. So what I want to not have is them to have a number and us not be able to defend the fact that that's not the number. For whatever reason, they want to change how this is done, and I think we need to be prepared to explain it.
No, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm working with counsel. As you know, we have our annual motions meeting where we sit down as a group and determine what motions are going to be made by Finance Committee relating to the articles. I've already advised counsel, and he's already advised the moderator, that there are expected to be a number of positive motions. And the question really then comes, would these be positive motions offered by the Board of Selectmen or so other venue? But I stand ready to explain all the numbers that we will rely upon at town meeting.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Anything further on any other articles tonight that board members want to talk about?
Not for me, no.
Nope. Mary?
No, all set.
Okay. Town Administrators' report?
Thank you, folks. Beyond what you may have seen from some of the department reports, there are two things I'll emphasize. First, I was able to, and I missed the meeting, so thank you to the board for granting me the authority to sign grant applications. So the first one I was able to do was the Mass Cultural Council, working with the Director of Cultural Affairs. And this was a maximum obligation or grant to us of $2,500. So I think that's going to, that grant authority is going to expedite the process. And as I mentioned earlier, I will have more information in your packet next week. I was able to execute a master service agreement. That's what the vendor calls it. The vendor is Clifton Larson Allen. They are an accounting firm known as CLA. In fact, anyone that's dealing with Barnstable County and the ARPA portal, CLA is their accounting firm auditing that on behalf of the federal government. We were able to gain the services of a well-accomplished accountant through CLA. They cannot use the title of Finance Director, Town Accountant, but they can do all of the functions and requirements. So I'm thrilled to say that we reached agreement, and they've started today. And more information on that contract will be shared in your packet next week.
Thanks.
Other than that, that's my report.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Mary?
I don't have anything.
Dawn?
Don't have anything.
Larry?
I have a couple of questions for Joe. So hang on, Joe, these aren't real bad. I took a quick review of the revenue report we got today, and there are a couple of questions that arise from that, Joe, that maybe you could get back to us on. And one of those are, and I'm looking at warrant articles in the revenue report that Megan sent out today.
Is that Megan Green in accounting?
Megan Green in accounting.
Yep, so it's a monthly revenue report?
It's a monthly revenue report. This is for February. And just a couple of questions occurred to me. There's a warrant article from 2021 for ambulances, $60,000. And if you read the warrant articles, actually for ADA sidewalks. So I think that's probably a mistake in the revenue report. But that is my question. We're still working on the sidewalk improvement in front of Brooks Library. I assume that's what this is for.
So the first thing I have to do is get my hands on that monthly revenue report to just get the frame of reference.
Because I think first there's a mistake in how it's reported in the report, because reported as ambulance funding is the $60,000, but the article refers to is for the sidewalk repair that.
In front of Brooks Library.
Right.
Okay.
And I know that's still ongoing, but I'd like to get an update on that, is the reason I bring that up, because that's an ADA compliant issue that we do need to Right. Need to correct, and it's been hanging around for, well, this is '21, so this is now three years. You can head on it. And we still have $200,000 in the comprehensive plan that we have that is to be spent. So we're in pretty good shape on that.
Correct. That funding is what is going to be used to fund the successful bidder on the responses to the local comprehensive plan. I can work with Megan to find out what the status of that is. As you know, Paul Halkiotis, our Director of Planning, was working on that. But that funding source was set aside by Charlene Greenholt. We thank her for that, because we're going to rely upon that going forward.
I suppose I'm surprised we hadn't spent any yet, but that
Correct. We've kept our hands off on that.
But that leads me to a question. I'm hoping we're going to spend it soon, because we're trying to move ahead on that plan.
We, and we expect to be expending that over the two, two and a half years that the plan will be
But maybe an update of what that's, what you're thinking of
Sure.
Going forward on that would be useful. And that's my two comments.
Thank you. Dawn, you're all set. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.